I'll call the order at 6:02 and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
The order of business is to approve the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda? Eric, do you want to make an addition?
I'll make that motion.
Eric, second?
I'll second.
By Meredith, second by George. We need to add extracurricular contract recommendations underneath personnel. Is there any other additions, deletions, or corrections? Eric Dunn, all those in favor of approving the tentative of the addition, please say aye. Amanda?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, general public comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Amanda?
Hi, yes, I would like to speak about two things, please. So, my name is Mandy Thomas and I have two children that attend the Wells Village School. I have a secondary grader and a preschooler. My preschooler is in preschool at the Wells School and I have a clarifying question, comment regarding the October tuitioning of preschool students. So my understanding of the motion that that October school board meeting is that moving out of districts may attend the Wells Village School preschool if there is room for the state rate, which is essentially for free. I am 100% on board with teachers and staff being allowed to have their children attend, but I'm serious concerned with it being open to the general public. I think it would be very unfair to the teacher to comment this. The teacher myself, having a class size of 11 versus 20 is a huge difference, especially when it comes to parent-teacher conference day and report cards. And at the preschool level, I feel that Wells Village School should keep a small class size to not overwhelm the children at such a young age. My own preschooler has a severe speech delay and he is thriving in the environment right now, having 10 classmates, but I think if he had 19 or 20 other classmates, that he would not do very well at all. And additionally, with the motion passed the way it is, you couldn't deny, for example, a child with significant mental needs and that could potentially cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. So again, I just want to say I'm in full support of teacher and staff having children attend. I love Wells Village School. I actually worked at Wells Village School myself, kindergarten through sixth grade, and I love that my kids go there now. I specifically love Wells Village School for the small class sizes and I just feel that leaving out the wording for teachers and staff with that motion could truly jeopardize this. I also just want to mention that I teach fifth grade at the Menowee Community School. At my school, I can pay 40% of the yearly tuition rate for my out-of-district children to attend and that's for through sixth grade. And I think that teachers should have that option in Wells too. It shouldn't just be that they can attend preschool. I just feel with teachers having their own children at the school that they work at, they can potentially be more involved in sports, coaching, NTO, etc. So I just wanted to state that I have concern about that motion that's passed at that October school board meeting. And then secondly, the second comment I wanted to make is about the preschool playground. It currently has five of the same exact slides and that's it. And my preschooler absolutely hates that playground and always asks to go to the fun playground. I've talked to Liz a little bit. I don't understand why the preschoolers can't go on the playground. I was told because it needs to be fenced in completely, but I know that at the school I work at, three miles down the road, our preschoolers only play on the playground. I would assume this is under the same state regulations. We don't have tents or anything. But even if they need to stay in their separate playground, I personally offered to build a sandbox, do a playhouse, a playground outside, etc. I've been told that that's not allowed every time. I just think that it is crucial and should be looked at and needed immediately because with COVID, our kids should be outside as much as possible. And right now, there's many days they're not going outside at all. I think they're also mixing out an additional, you know, just collaboration and making them play and physical activity, even if they just want a sandbox, you know, and a plastic cushion to it. So I just wanted to express that concern as a parent as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. Just a quick question to clarify. Your concern with the motion that was made back in October?
Correct.
The wording specifically, could you repeat that again?
My under- sure. So my understanding of the motion that passed in October, which granted a teacher to allow her child that's out of district to attend the Wells preschool, which I'm all for, but I believe the motion said that any out-of-district child can attend. And it didn't just say that an out-of-district child, that's, you know, a child of teacher or staff can attend. So I just think that leaving out that crucial wording from teachers and staff could jeopardize just kind of the small school feel and what we're currently offering to our kids.
Okay, I get what you're saying. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Hi, I'm hearing Dunn. We will move on to the consent agenda. Everyone should have minutes from November 3rd and November 18th in their packets. Motion could be in order to approve the minutes.
I'll make the minutes, hit the man.
Your second?
I guess I'll second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Meredith. Any changes to the minutes? In favor of approving the minutes, November 3rd and 18th, please say aye or raise your hand. Bye. Passes warrants. Has two warrants. Move to approve warrants 198 to 200. Your second?
I'll make, I'll second that.
All those in favor of approving the warrants as presented, please say aye or raise your hand. Bye.
Aye.
Aye.
Your consent report.
Thanks, Eric. I have a few items. It was a relatively, thanks to be brave in conferences, kind of short month, so just a few things to discuss. The first thing I want to do is, I just want to begin with some positive. I just have a brief statement sent here before, but I'll read it out loud in the public news slot. I would like to congratulate Rick Beal, Liz Colte, and the staff members of Milltown Springs Elementary School and Wells Village School, who have both been recognized by the Vermont Agency of Education and Secretary French for their continued efforts to commit to implementing PBIS, which is Professional Behavioral Interventional Supports, for the past year. Milltown Springs and Wells Village Schools have been committed for their variety of interventions and supports and provided both their students and their families. I just want to publicly congratulate Rick, Liz, and the staff of Milltown Springs and Wells Village on their great accomplishments. Keep up the good work. So I just want to start off with some public recognition. It was great to hear that there were maybe between 15 and 20 schools in the state of Vermont recognized. Nice to see that both Wells Village and Milltown Springs were represented. So just congratulations to Rick, Liz, and the staff for all the hard work and keep that up. So, thank you. Couple of things, we're really just around one item from COVID, just about test to stay. Last month, we talked about implementing this. It has been, it's ready to roll in our SU schools, you know, Milltown, Springs, Wells Village. You know, Rick and Liz and the staff at those schools have been trained. So if there was a situation which we have positive case and since we need to, you know, identify as close contacts, we would implement the test to stay if those that have signed a consent form. So if you have questions about this, obviously you can reach out to myself, you can reach out to Rick, Liz, or Jackie Becker, school nurse for both, we're more happy to answer the questions. I know that in some of the other schools in the SU that had positive cases, had close contacts, we have been able to keep a large number of students in school, which has been great to know that I think we posted 150 students who would have been out for six to seven days on quarantine, nearly escaped school. I think that's ideally what we wanted is just to minimize the level of disruption of this. But we hope that we won't have any cases and hopefully it just dings our schools. But, you know, that is our goal is that if there are cases, that we can quickly seamlessly keep the kid in school, you know, without disruptions to their learning, as well as disruptions to families as well. So if you have any questions, I said, please reach out to Rick, Liz, or Jackie, or myself. The last thing I just want to touch upon is the, I have sent out communications around the first step of our two-step process around the strategic plan, and that's just the developing the portrait of graduates. We have across the SU, we have close to 50 to 55 people who have responded that they'd like to be a part of this team. We do have representatives from Milltown and Wells, community members, some staff members, obviously Rick and Liz, a few of the board members that opted to be a part of this process. This is something which we will be updating you on a regular basis in terms of what's going on. You know, the design team is a part of this process because they said they will do a lot of legwork. They'll, you know, take a look at a lot of the visioning, some decision-making, you know, the kind of practice liaisons between the community and Patel for Kids in terms of the organization that is running this. So it is a great process. I know there were a couple of parents who were upset because they couldn't participate because of time and the commitment and, you know, work or other things. We will have many opportunities for families to still participate in this process. Whether it be, and it's not just going to be surveys. And I know that to our staff members, they hate hearing that we're surveying because I think some of them are surveyed out. But I think it will be, you know, something like satellite groups where there might be opportunities for, you know, to be within small groups, you know, schools, to get some feedback, you know, small little constructive groups, you know. So there'll be a lot of different opportunities for people to participate for the next year or so as we develop the portrait of graduate and strategic plan. Like I said, this will be something which we will be updating the board and the public on a regular basis in terms of where we are, where we're going, where we're at. All right. So if you have any questions about this, obviously feel free to reach out. And I know that people ask, well, can they join midway through? Ideally, this is something where we want to do the design team, someone who's there for all four meetings because of the, it's kind of a linear process, at least for the design team. So it doesn't really benefit us if people are coming in and out. So like I said, there'll be other opportunities for people to participate if needed. So, all right. And really, I think that's about it for tonight. So I think Rick and Liz can touch upon some other things here about the school-based thing. Thanks. Any questions?
Maybe you can answer this. I just had a question with the portrait of a grandparent. Yes, I thought the help for kids was kind of be helping with the as far as like the community outreach department, you know, are they just facilitating meetings primarily?
Well, so they're, basically really is they're, you know, doing facilitation there or running meetings to all legwork things all the time. The outreach really was, you know, done through us, that we reach out to communities, you know, to interest individuals. And that's kind of how traditionally it's been done.
And then, yeah, one person from the community that is able to join or is there a lot of?
I don't have the numbers right in front, but I know that we do have representation from each, from, there's representation from Milltown, Wells. I know that sometimes it's more than others. It is something which if someone's interested in attending, they can contact myself or Christine McGiff's prior to decide if we can look to join. So so if there's someone here from Milltown and Wells, right now, all of our meetings will be virtual. They're not being universal. I think we're, you know, particularly in the summer meeting, the January meeting are virtual and we'll kind of wait to see what February, March, April look like. But I think if things are working virtually, we'll just keep it virtual because it's more convenient for families around, you know, watching children and things on the phone. So.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was, you know, getting at, that there were, if we needed to, you know, look into ways of expanding information out there. I definitely support this teacher plan. So anyone who's interested, please reach out. That's my question right now. Okay, thanks.
Want to help out? Questions for this prepared headed? All right. Let's go first.
Go ahead, Mr. Beal.
All right. So welcome, everybody. As Chris said, it's November, it seems like it flew right by. I don't know where it went. Anyway, I want to share some things about PBIS, both Wells and Milltown Springs, where we're observed by our, their grant partners and also the Vermont PBIS team. They came to visit each school for half a day. The same team was also one of our universal PBIS team meetings. They had a chance to visit all the classrooms, interview students, teachers, even support staff. They are understanding about the PBIS, the Positive Behavior Interventional Support System we have at each school and they knew what our guiding expectations for us, its style was of safe, being safe, trustworthy, respectful. And I'm sure it's the same thing with Wells. Yeah, right there. So I'm very proud of what our staff and students and, you know, what we do for PBIS at our school and very pleased with, I haven't heard, first time I've heard this, must be a new announcement, of what you mentioned, Chris.
I just received a letter yesterday, so.
So I was very excited.
Yeah, very excited.
So for both of us, you know. So I think it kind of goes to collaboration we have and so it's a really good thing. The long of PBIS, so we just had our second all-school celebration and this is for recognizing students when they are displaying or showing that they understand our expectations. We had a kite flying afternoon with the kids, made kites, paper bagged kites. And just the joy of seeing all the kids running around, even the sixth graders, it was just a wonderful event for the kids. We have our third one coming up in a couple of weeks. And once again, this is a way of recognizing students for creating this positive learning environment for everyone. My board report, Liz, I think I'm taking everything.
You're okay.
So we applied for a current school grant for $15,000. I heard back on Sunday that we approved the $10,000. So this can be a collaboration for all schools. This connection with farms and food and so it's going to be a great program and once again, it's this kind of sister school collaboration which is going to help both of us. And so I am pleased to announce that we are participating in a PIKO six-week program. It's not going to be a scholarship this year, but Friends for Education, our PPO group is going to be helping to fund and we'll make sure that no child who wants to attend skiing or even the ski and skating, snowboarding, will have that opportunity. We'll trade out money somehow.
How long your first date is?
It's the 24th, it's a Monday, so it's a little bit after the really cold one, so that'd be.
And then what, what day is it again? I do like Monday.
Monday. Which is going to tie in with TD, so it's just a natural TD day. So it's just, it's a perfect line. And probably just the last thing, I just want to recognize the work the teachers are doing. Academic, working with the students and, you know, I can't give them enough credit for everything that's gone on and work with the students.
Thanks, Mr. Beal. I do have a few extra things to add. I will echo his, thanks to the teachers. It's been really positive to walk into classrooms and see routines established. Kids are actively engaged in their learning, they're taking over their learning. Some of them are being able to run foundation drills with success. We're seeing an improvement in their stamina to work with each other, which we've been focusing on as well. And in my board report, I wanted to specifically acknowledge and congratulate. We have three students who submitted an essay for our GIST program. If you'll remember, a couple of months ago, I noted that we spoke about the Memorial Scholarship for Eliot Stern, the donation that was made. And in collaboration with Courtney Bishop, we decided we would have students had a choice to write about a couple of different topics. And we have three students who will be fully scholarship for the GIST program this year. We have Olivia McDuff in fourth grade, Karen MacRaeon in fifth grade, and Trey Golden in sixth grade. So we have a nice way to kind of kick that off. And their essays were actually featured in our chalkboard. So if you received that communication, you should see what they were writing about. Very proud of them. I also wanted to know, we are working with the Four Winds folks and I know a board member, Amanda Weeden, had brought that back for us and has been very helpful in getting that set up and going. So we're actively looking for volunteers to be able to help us get that program up and off the ground. Another collaboration with Milltown, we're going to go in on it together. So we're hopeful that the volunteers can help in both schools. And we'll have a little bit of opportunity to kind of choose the program and then we think will be best for both of our groups of students. I also wanted to recognize that the teachers, part of the work that the Supervisor Union is doing is with Partnerships for Literacy and Learning. And teachers in this building either had classroom observations by folks about literacy in our building, or met one-on-one with the consultants to talk about literacy. And I just wanted to thank them for allowing folks in the room and taking time to be able to talk about that because I think it's going to help continue to strengthen our practices in this building and in the Supervisor Union. So thank you for that. And finally, I would just like to thank Ms. Posey and Ms. Crawford and Ms. Vander Veen who came to help prep for our Thanksgiving meal that we had before break. It was not traditional where we didn't all get to sit down together, but it was more personal than it was last year. We actually had to, got to have lunch in the cafeteria as our cohorts. So it was nice to see the joy on everyone's face. I think people felt really good going into break having something that they had looked forward to every year. Yeah, so we're busy. It's really hard to believe it's December, but these next few weeks are going to be full of excitement, joy, and lots of learning. So very proud of the work everyone's doing.
Any other questions for all principals? I just want to say congratulations. We all snapped for PBIS. That's quite an achievement, right? I did have a question on the Four Winds. Is there, what is that? Again, is that in the spring?
Yeah, it'll be three. We've signed up for the three sessions that'll occur in the spring. And what happened a few years ago was we ranked the months that we wanted to occur. And then there was flexibility amongst the volunteers to decide what day worked for everybody. And there's training that they go through with the Four Winds programs group, I don't know, the specific director, I think, before they come out to the school. So when we did it a couple of years ago, the teachers actually had training with the Four Winds folks who were going to be running the programming. So it was a really cohesive experience with kids. A lot of shared collaboration, discussion. It was great. We did it only once, maybe twice before we ended up closing, but yeah.
Are you, is there a certain, basically, deadline you need for volunteers?
No, I don't, I haven't heard from anybody. But you can contact myself or even send them the other, when the folks are interested and you can get your information to the people who are supporting the, bringing on, the onboarding of the volunteers.
Thank you. No other questions? We'll move on to the final.
Good evening. So we'll start tonight with the announced tuition. There was a sheet in the packet. So each year, we have to set a tuition for the elementary school for students that are attending from outside, Milltown and Wells. So in the packet, I provided a sheet with the current announced tuition for FY22 for Wells Springs, as well as the announced tuition for some other elementary schools in the area. So right now, our announced tuition is $15,000. Slate Valley is at $15,000. Runtland City is $11,600. The Mill River Schools, the Timmets, Wallingford, Clarendon, are at $16,750. And then the private school rate is $15,513. We have increased our tuition every year. The last few years, our condition this year has been planned at the $15,000 for FY23. I think currently we have three tuition students.
No, it's 14,5 last year.
It's currently, you mean FY21 would have been 14,5, yes. FY22, which is the year we're going to be next.
I didn't catch that.
I'm sorry.
Can you repeat those figures, please?
FY21 was $14,500. FY22 is $15,000 and that is on the sheet that was in the hand now. And then my recommendation for FY23 is to keep it flat at $15,000.
All right. All right, so yeah, every December, we usually approve and announce tuition rate.
You want a motion to approve the, or to make a motion to set the tuition rate at $15,000?
I'll second it.
By Meredith, second by George. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the announced tuition rate, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Amanda?
Sorry, I think Meredith. Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now the budget.
Okay, so budget. In the packet, it was draft two. There wasn't a lot of change that was included in the packet. I'll go through the changes that were included in the one that you have in front of you. But since this was added to the packet, I do have some revised tuition numbers, which does have a significant impact on the budget. So I'll give you that though in a minute. So in draft two, three changes. The assessments and the billbacks are now based on the approved S U budget, which was approved at the November board meeting. Terrific tuition revenue, which is based on the announced tuition that you just approved tonight, is based on three students that are currently attending. is based on three students that are currently attending Middletown Springs. And additional secondary tuition, we're still pending at the time. We were still waiting for some updated numbers. So based on just those changes, if you go to page, to the end of the budget, be page eight. Total expense was sitting at a 3.77% increase. And education spending was up by 2.46%, or 116,000. And education spending is the amount we need to raise in property taxes. So just, you don't have this in front of you, but just update to the tuition numbers that I got over the last few days. We added 7.25 student from the second draft to the third draft, which is causing the secondary tuition to increase. And you'll see that in the third draft. So total expense after that increase is now sitting at 5.97%. And education spending is sitting at 4.81%, with 228,000. On better news side, there was the tax letter that was released today. And based on that, right now, the state is looking at, they're sitting on a large surplus in the Ed Fund. And so they're looking at doing a significant increase to the yield. And so let me just bring those numbers up right here. They're looking at, currently, the yield is $11,370. And the Tax Commissioner's recommendation for a yield is at $13,846. So if you were to look at that piece alone, if the budget was flat, this would decrease your tax rate by 22.7 cents. So, I mean, we won't know what the actual yield is until the legislative meet and start discussing it. And as we know, it's one of the last items that's usually approved in the budget. But that will offset much of this impact from the increase in the budget. And secondary tuition students, we really have no, we have no control over that. What we're seeing in, is a number of different things. You're not the only budget that's up because of it. We're seeing more students come back to school that had left during the pandemic. Students that were either homeschooled or attending a distance learning program. We're also seeing a bubble with larger seventh grade classes that are going into, into secondary, larger than the 12th grade classes that are graduating. And then we're also seeing the addition of the religious classes that are having, or of religious schools that we weren't paying for in the past, and now we're paying for, which is, which is having an impact. Actually, just to clarify myself, so the bubble that I just talked about, that's actually just in Runtland Town. It's pretty flat in Wells Springs. So you just have the first, you have the homeschool piece, where they're going back to school, and you have the religious school piece. Your seventh grade and 12th grade class are pretty much leveling each other out. Meredith, do you have a question?
Did I not see the price for the religious schools? I know you said the state average, but I'm wondering, are they coming in lower?
We don't have them budgeted at the state average. We have them budgeted with, at what we paid last year, plus a 3% increase.
The religious schools?
The school that the, the one that's budgeted, it's in the, it's actually in the packet on page 10. So we're budgeting what we paid last year, plus a 3% increase.
I guess I was looking for them in the announced tuition sheet. That's what I was thinking of.
Oh, okay, yes. So the state, I don't have that, I just have what we would be responsible for, which would be elementary school. I don't have secondary on that sheet. The state average for high schools, currently, 16,842. And I know for next year, I'm budgeting 17,347, which is a 3% increase. So typically, the next step is putting this information into the tax rate calculation and seeing how this will affect the tax rate. We are still waiting for pieces of information. And the yield letter I just got, literally less than an hour ago, so I didn't, I wasn't able to put that into the, into the calculation. We are still waiting for equalized pupils, which is a large piece in that calculation. So we would look at, at the January meeting, I would have all of that information with what the, the tax rate impact would be. And hopefully, by then, maybe we'll have a little bit more information on the yield. Any questions on the budget?
Yes. Well, does anyone have any questions first or?
So the first page lists all the changes that we talked about last month, as well as the new changes. So if you, if you just need a reminder of what was in last month's presentation, the big items would be, there's the tuning of staff positions, there's the increase in health insurance, there's the surplus, which is offset, revenue that's offsetting your education spending. Also, at the last meeting, we talked about those positions, and the board wanted us to go back to the SU and see about funding those positions with ESER fund. And the board chair, the committee did meet, and it was consensus that we would not be using ESER funds to fund local-based positions. Now, we would be focusing ESER funds on SU-wide positions at this time.
I have a few questions here. Some of them are just, just to kind of get an understanding. On page nine, on the food budget part, it's blank for FY23. That's because we're still receiving the food grant, right?
I'm sorry, I didn't really hear the question.
I just wondered why sales to students is blank on page nine at the top.
Yeah, so I haven't, I haven't budgeted all of the revenue from the state. We're not really sure what the full service program is going to look like for next year. So right now, we know students aren't paying. It's all being paid through the Seamless Summer Program. It may continue through next year as well. If it doesn't, then we will see a decrease in revenue from the state, and we'll see an increase in student-paid revenue. It should be close to a wash. But really, based on right now, I built the budget as, as the way things are right now. And considering that we're still seeing many aspects of pandemic continuing to next year as well.
And then on page 10, I'm just kind of wondering why we have so many SLPs?
So the SLPs are SU positions? I couldn't really speak too much about this, except, I mean, they're all based on IP needs. We have eight schools, approximately 1,600 students in speech, language needs are one of the biggest needs that we do see as far as speech, OT, and PT. You only, you're assessed back as part of the assessment, and you're paying your piece based on the assessment calculation. And as far as the billbacks go here, you're only paying, again, your piece of that calculation, which is based on the SU assessment percentage.
Okay, yeah, I just wasn't sure if all these SLPs were working at both schools. Okay, I see.
Yep, so that bottom section for the OTs, PTs, that's all of the SU positions? And since they're not really assigned schools, they're shared positions, we took their total disallow, and then we divided up and assess it based on the assessment percentages. So Wells Springs, 4,000, the total disallow for all of those positions is 49,000, and Wells Springs is 4,000, is 7,000.
All right, thank you. On page 11, I think you might have covered it, but I just, that was one of the questions I had about graduating secondary students and seventh graders. How many 12th graders are graduating?
So that number in the second draft is one of the big changes that's occurring in the third draft. So in the third draft, 12th graders is, I think it's 14, let me just go to that page. It's 14.5 versus the seventh graders of 13. So that's what's resulting in most of the increase.
Where does the .5 come from?
The .5, the biggest place that it comes from, well, it can, it can be two reasons. Usually, during the year, it can come from students that are starting mid-year, so that we don't pay for a full year. But for budgeting purposes, it comes from Coria Valley, does only charges 25% of the tuition rate for students that are attending Stafford. So if you have two students attending Stafford, you're paying quarter of tuition for them, and that would be the .5.
Got it. Page seven, under plant operations, like, you added more to the repairs for each building?
Yeah, I did. I increased the repairs by 5,000 each. There's a number of projects. I was hoping to actually speak a little bit about this as well. So we've talked about a number of projects at the board level that we know need to happen. And then Liz has another one that I'm not sure if she's going to be speaking to it about it tonight. But we know both buildings need to be painted. And I think Middletown is more of a priority than Wells as far as painting goes. But that is an expense that will eat up most of their repairs budget unless we set money aside. We know we have 35,000 in the budget for Wells Springs repairs, which would be a bucket that both schools can pull from, that's on top of their own school allotment. We also have $35,000 in, currently sitting in the capital reserve fund. So between that, reserve fund and the extra 35,000, we would have enough to do at least one or two of those projects. But considering another project that I know Wells has as far as, Liz, do you want to talk?
Yeah, sure. So we currently, we replaced our stove. And when it was being fitted, it was noted that we need a hood above the stove. And so Mr. Hathaway has had conversations with folks about the extreme side of the project, and then kind of some potential options that we may have depending on how we choose to run our food program and how we choose to cook some of the food. And so the fire marshal is coming through, I think, the next week or the week after. I talk more about that project and what we really truly need to get done. It's something that we have to do. We need to do it in the next fiscal year. We wouldn't be able to do it while kids are here anymore. It's going to be a construction-based project, which will require us to potentially have a contractor kind of oversee some of that structural needs too. So Mr. Hathaway has had conversations with some folks just to kind of see, you know, how much we have to get done. And then depending how we choose to run our food program, we can either go with the current conversations we've had, or maybe something a little bit less. It's still to reduce what we'd like to for the kids. So I've been holding at this moment, but we know that the project's coming, and we have to plan for it. So I hope to have more information, specific information for you at the next board meeting, as to what that looks like in the timeframe. But for right now, I just have that, we do have to do it. We've confirmed that it has to be done, and we'll try to get you the information as soon as possible.
And Liz, I believe the high end of that was 60,000 if we go and have to do the most extensive piece.
Yes, the high end was roughly $60,000.
Wells also has 15,000 in their capital maintenance fund.
Okay. And yeah, so a project like that will be done in the summertime?
It would have to be done, yeah, when there are no students in the building.
All right. Yeah, I answered my question on the repairs part. And then I just kind of had a question about the health insurance. Do you think that with the state healthcare bargaining, when they make their decision, I think they made their final, this is their arbitrary decision, and that'll come out this month, do we need to be worried about that like we were?
No, I read the report, and so there's no change to our premium percentage. And it doesn't look like there's a negative change to the HRA percentage as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. And does anyone else have questions for Liz about the budget? So I guess everyone's fine with the two positions that were presented last, last interventionist to change what it comes with. I have a question about that. I know we talked about it last week, but the current counselor is, special education, and so And so if they're going to go to a full-time counselor, are we hiring someone else to do special ed or are we in the full-time?
That would be based off of IP numbers at that time, how many people get allocated to the building, how many special educators you have. So I would project that changing the following year. But that would be a conversation that Christine, Cam, and Kirkley Stedman would have moving forward. As far as personnel change, then you would have to go through that entire process, hiring process. So the position itself, I'm looking to increase from half-time to full-time.
Well, it's the SU physician, right?
The counseling position?
No.
But the special ed position would be an SU position, correct? Counseling would be a total.
The counselor position would be a Wells Springs position. Currently, the employee is an SU employee. So I would imagine you'd have to post as a full-time and that employee would have to apply for that position.
Yep.
You said that there's a third draft of this. So are we, are you looking to get approval for the budget tonight or after another draft?
No, I wouldn't recommend approving it tonight. I think we still need to wait and see when other numbers come out from the state. The equalized pupil is, it's supposed to come out December 15th if the state brings it out on time. And I'd also like to be able to show you the tax rate impact before you approve a budget. So I would recommend we look at this at the January meeting. We're also still waiting on the six semester rolling average for the vocational. Right now, that's still pending.
Yeah, I see that in yellow highlighted. If no one has any other questions for Liz, I move on to personnel. Thank you, Liz.
Welcome.
All right, so we have contract recommendations, correct, or curricular? A few questions for, in terms of that. You're motion to approve these contract recommendations?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Meredith, second about Amanda, is there any discussion, did anyone have any questions on that side? Actually, I have one that I wanted to. But I just wanted to kind of acquire winter sports. I think we might see the same thing we did with soccer.
Having to switch mid-season from going from playing intramural games to just back to practice, is that what?
Yeah.
That would be a switch, I mean, I would hope not, but we obviously have to keep the safety of everybody a priority. So you have the winter guidance that we have to follow unless we get any new information. You know, we're planning to, for games item, our athletic director's been putting schedules together, getting rough reads, trying to hold a traditional basketball season with all of this in place. But we only know this, you know, day to day, so I hope not, but.
Meredith?
So are the guidelines the same as for upper school? That if you're unvaccinated, you have to be tested weekly? And if you're a player?
Yeah, the recommendation is that surveillance testing would be done for unvaccinated student athletes. And so we're currently working with our school nurses on how we can bring that message to families. Right now, we're looking at whether or not we can offer that in billing or if we look at a take-home PCR testing or things along those lines. But I know that Lisa Madison worked, met with the school nurses today to discuss that.
Would that, would that apply to spectators as well attending the game? Will they provide anything or are they outing that they're not?
The spectators would be asked to be masked in the buildings and follow the current school expectations. It's the players that would be surveillance tested if they've met the need to be surveillance tested.
Can I just say, from what I understand, if they are considered close contacts, any students or athletes that are vaccinated do not have to quarantine, is that correct?
So it'd be just a test to stay, Meredith, correct? So like it'd be no different than if we identified close contacts in a classroom. If that child was vaccinated, had no symptoms, would be fine. But if an unvaccinated student was, would be allowed to test to stay and go to school and be polite. Is that what you're asking, Meredith?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
I just want to make sure I answer your question correctly.
All those in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
New business. Taking fourth seats, so we have two letters of interest here. Two ones that I've received and have today. So we have both candidates have been invited tonight. See, I see Cara Hayes. Did you want to speak?
Like somebody shuffled their chair, did you want me to talk?
Yeah, if you want to, you know, basically just introduce yourself, know if you want to add anything.
Hi, I'm Cara. So it's in my letter. I was born and raised in Middletown and it's like been written in the stars that at some point I would become a board member. But yeah, here I am. I've spent the last almost 20 years working with children and youth in the state and, you know, and passionate about giving children a strong future. Sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback, so I'm hearing it in my ears.
Thank you, I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that.
No, that's okay. If you have any questions about my letter, I would be happy to expand on anything.
I read your letter. Does anyone have any questions for Cara at all?
I do. You work with you, you've said, 20 years. In the new environment, the last couple of years, have you had issues with working with children? These would be masks and vaccinations, things like that?
Do I have issues working with them or?
What's your experience with them?
So I spent most of last year meeting with students virtually. It's only been in this school year that I've been allowed back in schools to meet with them in person. In my experience, both with my own child who is in school and wears a mask and with the students that I work with, they don't care about masks. Like, not one of them has ever objected to wearing a mask in our interactions. They've always been very understanding, followed social distancing. Unless it relates to the work I'm doing with them, I don't ask vaccination status. But some of what I do is career counseling and there are career sectors where vaccinations are required. But at that point, we talk about vaccination and related to their career goals. But hopefully it captured what you were trying to ask. I am always fully masked and fully vaccinated when I go into schools for my own safety and for the safety of those around me. Both of my children are too young to be vaccinated. And so that's kind of the standard that I want to put forth for myself and my community to protect those around me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Eric, I'm not seeing these letters.
They went out yesterday. Meredith?
I just wanted to ask Cara if she is interested in running for the position because everybody understands that it's only filled until the next town election in March?
Yes, so my goal is to do this as a trial run, but I feel like if I am able to manage the workload that comes with it, my hope is to run in town, at town meeting day.
Did you find those letters, Amanda?
Yes, thank you.
The other letter of interest is from Harley Burrows. I don't see her here tonight. She had family emergency. And so because we can do this a couple of different ways, we can actually have an executive session to discuss the two candidates. Or... What's the pleasure of the board?
Do we feel enough time for all of the candidates to come full or just give this another week or so? Do we feel like everybody was aware of the opportunity?
I mean, we have, we have 30 days to fill the position, the vacancy, I should say, not position. And after 30 days, a select board has to be involved. And so two weeks and we have two letters of interest. I think that's fantastic. And I know, I inquire about, I think, it posted on Front porch forum. It went out in the Wells School publication, even though it is for Middletown, but it still went out. So, you know, I don't think postponing it really makes sense in the fact that we have two good, interested community members tonight. And also those, you know, whoever's appointed tonight still has to run. So if there is interest from the community in Middletown, they could, they could get their name on the ballot. And I will say that to get your name on the ballot, you have to get petition and get signatures. I think that's January 20th, like, yes, somewhere around there to do that. So, I don't have any writings. Okay, so I think what we can do is just have a quick executive session at the end of the meeting. And then when we come out, we will have a decision.
Eric, I just set a separate, like, to all board members for executive sessions, so if you join that. So if people want to stay on this call, they can.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to town meeting for now. So that's on the agenda to talk about what we're going to do. Last year, we did a, basically a full-on remote town meeting. And now that there's no state emergency, I guess, how do we want to do that this year? Do we want to continue doing a in-person hybrid model or just all in-person or all hybrid? What are the board's thoughts?
I like the hybrid model. It allows for a larger participation audience. I think we get a lot more people who might not come out on a illustrious evening.
Also, too, we don't know where we're going to be at that point with what's going on. So if it's hybrid, we can fall back mostly on.
Yeah, exactly. I agree. I like the hybrid model. In a lot of occasion, I feel it's great. And I would imagine we still need a physical location.
Yes.
That's open. So last year was technically Wells, this year the town Springs. Those who want to be in person. Last year, we cleared this year. I think we're going to need to do a, another special meeting for the warning because of the 30-day and 40-day.
Looking at, well, potentially, we'll see what's in January. So in January, I will, actually this month will start draft up just to language the warning. Obviously, we all, you know, have to, in January, start talking about the articles. Excuse me, but we can take a look at what that would look like and have that done. So that would be plugging the articles for that. And then if we have to, because I think if January 20th, that's when we have to, that's in September. So I think we may have to have a quick meeting just to approve the warning. Because like I said, I think we meet January 1st. Because like I said, I think we meet January 1st and 4th. It's the first week in January, so right after winter break. Unless then, unless this board would like to move to January a little later tonight to avoid a separate meeting, you know, give a little more time, we can actually do that. Because we, like I said, that's a different term, too.
Okay, well, definitely better than that. I have no issues with that.
Well, you know, I think we still have to per the budget. I think once the budget's been approved, we then have to put down the warnings. So I think we would need two weeks, so yeah, so I'm sorry.
Also, Nora had said to me that he wanted or needed a warning for the 4th or 5th emergency. I'm looking at that timeline, if possible.
Well, look, if it's possible, that's what happens in our January meeting, so.
Yeah, well. I think it's needed just so they can...
Get the shredders and everything. Right, exactly. Yeah, I mean, all the clerks have a different timeline in terms of because they need to get their shredders and get things going. So it's probably a little bit different, so. I know that on our end, we're going to have reports and everything done really before winter break. Having that ready to go, but just be looking at the warnings. But also we'll wait on the budget piece and whether or not we can have their article items that go onto the warnings.
Okay. Okay. Keep it a hybrid model and bring... That's it for now on town meeting. What else do I need, anything else to bring up in regards to that? Right? We'll move on to policies. Got a few policies. Two of these are brand-new policies. These are, I'll just talk about them shortly, but they're just required policies by statute. They're not policies under the SBA and how they've already kind of embedded through the policy committees. And that is the special education policy and the super freedom on self-expression and school sponsor media policies. Hi, Jody. We're doing the current policy now.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, guys. I have a ridiculous migraine, like puking from a migraine. But, so I'll probably be pretty quiet.
Okay. All right. Do you want any questions on these policies? We have three of them that are second reads and are ready for adoption.
I have a question on the safety of security of school facilities. You do have material safety data sheets installed. Any hazards or materials stored here, is that part of the inspection? Process that it called out?
Can you ask your question again? I'm sorry.
Is making sure you have the proper material safety data sheets available and that they're in an accessible?
Yes.
As part of the process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The hazardous safety binders that have the data sheets in them are accessible intermediate? Yes.
Do you have any questions about these first read policies? Now it's time, if you have any concerns, then they would go back to the policy committee and the council building product, they would call.
I think they look good. I'd take a motion to approve them if that's what they're looking for tonight. I don't think there's anything wrong with them.
Is that again, Amanda?
Sorry, I don't think there's anything wrong with them. I think they look pretty good. And if it's for a motion to approve them, I would...
Yeah, specifically B4, C2, and F11.
Correct, yep.
Right, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Amanda's second place, of course. Any further discussion? Eric Dunn, hold your favor. Say aye, here you go, Jim. Any opposed? Stained? Jody? Jody, over there. This is not for the law school. Eric? Motion passes.
Next session, all right, before we... Eric, there is one conflict with the January 5th date. Louis, he's unavailable to attend on the 5th. So obviously, we want to look for a different date to support that Louis at the meeting room in January. Correct, Louis, there's a conflict with January 5th for you?
Correct, I'm out of town that day.
Okay. Yeah, that's just because they... Before we launch this third session. All right, so that's what they would be good.
Louis, when do you return from out of town?
The following weeks, the 10th I'm available and forward.
So the 12th will be... 12th is open, 10th we have Middletown, 11th we have Iris and 12th.
Okay, I don't have a problem with 12th. Does that work for other board members? That's me.
It works for me.
I'm fine.
Uh, Jody?
She just sent a message that she's got technical difficulties. She's tried signing out and back in, but you guys, she can't hear and you can't hear her.
Okay, I'm back and I can hear now, I'm sorry. So I didn't hear any of that, but I'm sure that whatever y'all are voting on, I'm okay with it, so. Yay, I'm in.
We're talking about our next meeting date.
Oh, yeah, yes, I agreed to whatever it was.
It's the 12th of January.
Okay, sounds good.
It'll sign you up for everything.
Right?
All right. Okay, so... We will do an executive session. Over. First, an elevated discussion. All right, so what we'll do is if everyone wants to stay in this link, we're going to move to executive session. For the purpose of appointing, discussion of appointing a public officer, public official. And when we come out of executive session, we'll come back to this link and make a decision then. So I'll go ahead and move us into executive session.
Eric, just a quick, real quick, I'm sorry. So to clarify, I will keep my laptop open. So for those who want to stand, I'll turn on the camera, let you know when to, because we'll have to log back in on the main screen here. That's okay. All right, so I'll keep mine open, so that link will stay open and stay active. That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
So you're going to shut this off now?
Yep.
All right, we are out of executive session at 7:39 by consensus. And having said that, I'd like to move that we approve Cara Haynes. That's the open position of her board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion by George, second by Meredith. All those in favor of appointing Cara, please say aye and raise your hands. Aye. He knows.
We seem to have lost a couple of people.
Yeah. We have to wait. Eleven thousand people.
Yeah. Someone has Amanda's phone?
I don't have Amanda's phone number.
I do.
Did you open my hand?
All right. Just try to run. He's back there. But I don't think she was on when...
She was on during the motions.
She was?
Yeah.
That's when you did the call, when you asked her.
Okay, that's good.
She did not vote, though.
No, she did not vote.
I know. Is that her?
Yeah, she's done.
Okay, Amanda, can you hear us?
I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
I voted, I am fine to abstain if it already went through. I apologize, it's a technical wifi issue here.
No, that's fine. We were waiting to hear your vote for appointing Cara Haynes for the board vacancy. I don't know if you saw that.
Yep, sorry, I thought I raised my hand before I got kicked off.
No, I didn't see anything, okay. So that's a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Now Steve, Jody, on the clear. Not being exposed to it. Okay, motion passes. Congratulations, Cara. Our next meeting is January 12th. So I'm sure you know you have to go to the clerk. If that helps.
Is the next meeting at Wells or Middletown?
It will be Middletown.
And Cara, Christine McGuinness from GRCSC will be contacting you tomorrow. Okay, get things set up for you, okay?
Awesome, thank you so much.
Congratulations, you're welcome.
Yeah. All right. If there is no other further business, Amanda.
I'm assuming there'll be a response to Harley.
Yes, I will let her know tomorrow when I'll send her.
And I imagine she's perfectly capable of running.
Yeah.
Her family, yes.
Yeah, I'll be, yeah, open.
Yes, I'll let her know that.
To adjourn would be in order.
Eric, we're checking. Add to next night, it's the public comment that was brought forward by Mandy. Would that be added to the agenda or discussed quickly to meet Mandy?
I can't understand you.
She's asking about the public comment made by Amanda Thomas.
Yeah.
And was curious if that was going to be added to the next board meeting or for the discussion tonight. Is that correct, Amanda?
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
It's not going to be discussed tonight, obviously. As far as the next agenda, I don't know what there is to discuss. I think, I don't think there was any questions in the public comment, so.
I thought she was asking for us to change the wording. And I mean, I know we were looking to hear from the public and accepting that it discussed what her thoughts were.
Okay, well, you know, we can add to the agenda if you want to discuss it then, as opposed to now. We can do that.
I think no, that is a January. If we could just decide the word exactly. It's not changing.
Yeah. We'll discuss that next. All right.
Yeah, I just thought, even if we don't make any decisions, just if we put it on, Eric, or discuss, it's great that we're getting public comment and to encourage the public to keep commenting. I just thought it would be appropriate if we just put it on, even if it's addressing or something.
Makes sense? All right, we can definitely do that, Amanda. If there's nothing else, if there's no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
No, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion by Meredith, second by Amanda. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, everyone, good night.